All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, December 7th Board of Selectmen's meeting. We'll get started with the Pledge of Allegiance. Chris is going to lead us in it.
(inaudible)
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 (laughing)
It's been a day. Okay.
All right.
Do we have anything for citizens' input? No? Nothing. Okay. Anyone signed on to Zoom besides Katie?
No.
No? Okay. All right. So we have Ann Malli here to talk about winter readiness and power outage prevention. So I know we've had Ann come annually kind of around this time every year. And I did ask Mike and Chris to be here. So if all three of you want to come on up. So I think, Ann, before you get started, you know, we would like to hear your winter plan, how you're maintaining trees and other things like that. And then not to kind of lay right into it, but I think you know that there's been a lot of outages in town recently. Like, it's the 1930s here with the power. If you guys have that mic from between you, Mr. Beck just wants to make sure you're talking into it. And, you know, I did go back and look on our trusty old Foxborough Discussion page where everyone gets riled up about everything. And just to give you an idea, I'm sure you probably have something prepared too, but we lost power on December 6th, Thanksgiving morning, November 25th, November 13th, which was that those tornado winds. I think the day before, there was a transformer issue. On November 1st, there was a surge on South Street. And then there was that storm on the 27th and 28th. So here we are, you know, just over a month with one, two, three, four, you know, five, six. We live in New England. I appreciate there's going to be snow, there's going to be winds, there's trees that are going to come down. But it seems like, as of recently, you know, it's a nice day and there's more and more disruption, particularly in that middle section of town.
Mm-hmm.
So I think we need to also hear from you, not only how are you getting ready for the winter, but what are you doing to maintain other? You know, what are you doing to maintain transformers? What are you doing to maintain, you know, other equipment that's causing the surges and all that?
Okay. So when I was going to stop, I was just explaining how the distribution system works. And in town, you have four substations. Not a lot of towns have that many substations in town. Some are fairly new, some are older substations. The Crocker Pond, which was built for basically for Gillette Stadium, is a fairly new substation, and that feeds mostly Route 1. And then we also install, put in a new substation in North Foxborough across from Gillette Stadium to feed Patriot Place. So that's, those are fairly new substations. We just put those in less than probably, well, Crocker Pond was 2,000, but North Foxborough within the last eight years, that's a new substation. Then we also have the other two substations. Foxborough One on DePonce Street, which used to be the old Fox, for the old Foxborough Company, and that has a couple of feeders out of it, as well as on Elm Street across from the DPW, which now that one is also in the design and permitting phase. We're going to be upgrading that substation. We already updated the Foxborough One, DePonce Street sub. We put new transformers in there. And in addition to the four substations that are in Foxborough, there's also a substation in South Rantham that feeds a couple of feeders in Foxborough, especially the one that we've been having issues in recently. All these substations are served with a 23KV subtransmission system, which is also known as the Union Loop. And back in 2012, when we had all those issues with the substations going flat, it was, as a result of that, we upgraded all of the subtransmission lines feeding all those substations. So over the past eight years, we've put in all new poles, we did all tree trimming on those circuits, we put new cables in. So all of the substations are basically, you know, we've redone them over and all the supplies have been upgraded. And we've done all that over, just in the past 10 years, all that work. As well as the South Rantham substation, that also, the feed to that also was updated. The feeder in question that we've been having issues on is what we call the 3422W4. That is served out of South Rantham. It's not, it's not actually served from Foxborough, it's first from South Rantham. So the feeder leaves South Rantham, goes through Rantham, and then it crosses Route 1 at North Street and feeds all of the North Street area down to Main Street. And it ends, the end of the feeder is where we've been having all the issues there. There were 1,988 customers on that, on that feed. And basically, we have what we call, there's two reclosers on that feeder. And a recloser is a device that we put on so when there's a fault that comes on, something comes in contact with our lines, rather than the whole feeder going out and all 1,900 customers going out, only a section of the feeder will go out. So depending on where the fault occurs, and the fault could be a tree, it could be an animal, it could be a motor vehicle accident, it could be a failure of a piece of our equipment, any of those things happen, that's what's going to cause, it's going to open up the system and there's going to be an outage. And we have two of those pole top reclosers. One is in Rantham and one is on North Street in Foxborough. And again, like I said, these reclosers, what they do is they are, what we have is they're programmed so that they don't shut off automatically. So say a tree comes down across our wires, it comes down, but it comes right up. Rather than it taking it out, it sort of knows that the fault is gone, so it'll come back on. And you may see the flicker of lights. And that may happen a second time. Again, in a big windstorm, it'll keep slapping, so that's what, that's why you see the flickering. And then after the third time, the power goes out. It's basically, and that's what we usually do, they usually program them for three, three instances. After the third instance, the power will go out and we have to send a truck out to patrol the line to find out where the fault occurred. And basically, that's exactly, you know, these devices, they're older devices, they don't communicate with our control center, so we physically have to send a truck out to go to that device and, and see what the cause is. Now, how our system analyzes this, it's based on the amount of customers that call in to report an outage. So the more customers that call in to let us know, that helps us analyze better as to what's happening. So if only 10 customers call in, okay, so that's, and it usually, we know exactly what transformer and fuse is these customers are on in our system. So when they call in, if it's only 10 customers, well, then it's only a few, so we'll send our truck to where that fuse is. If there's maybe 100 customers, okay, that came from the pole top recloser, then we'll send the truck to that device. If it's more, then it may be another pole top recloser. And if the whole, if it's the whole 1,900 customers that are out, then we think something happened at the substation and we send the crew immediately to the substation. So it's, it's not that, so it all, it all depends on how many customers call in.
So I think we live in a different world, though I think maybe 10 years ago, people's, people would pick up the phone and call. I think that's not the world we live in anymore. So how is National Grid, you know, changing to keep up with the times where, you know, people do go to like a town web, you know, Facebook page or post something and say, "Hey, anyone else out?" Because, you know what, it's, it's paying to call. Like, you got to look up the number, you got to make the phone call. I don't know that that's the world we live in anymore.
You can sign up to get, to text that you're out of power.
Okay.
And what you do is you text "N grid," and I have the numbers in there, whatever N grid, whatever the numbers are. And if you type "out" for that, and what happens, your cell phone number has to be on your account.
Okay.
But if, if your cell phone number is associated with your electric account number, then all you have to do is text "N grid" right out, and then we'll automatically send you notices when your power's out. And you can text us, and all you have to do is put "out," and we'll know you're out of power.
Okay.
So you don't have to call the 800 number, you just text that number and you write "out," and we'll know you're out of power.
I don't know, I don't know if anyone ever heard of that, or, I don't know if that's communicated, like...
I think the last time I was here, I sent a copy of a diagram on how to do that, and I can send it again.
Yeah, maybe that's something we could post on your website.
In the last two outages that we did have, I know with the hurricane and another outage that we were expecting high winds, we did post out the National Grid app as well.
The app? We posted the app?
Yeah, we do have, yeah, we have several apps.
But not the, I don't think I've seen the texts unless I, unless I've missed that one.
We can add that.
Okay, okay, great.
Yeah, so that's something for customers, don't have to call the 800 number because, especially when a big outage with a big storm, everyone's calling at the same time, there's a long wait time.
Yeah.
And all of that. You can, again, just text you. And it's not just your number, so you have an elderly parent that you want to know when their power is out. You can text their number as well, their address as well, and we'll send you notifications when they're out and when they're back.
Okay.
And also during the big storms is they'll send you a text, "Your power is back." And if your power isn't back, then you type "out" again, and we'll know that, okay, that, maybe that one section isn't restored because it sends somebody back out to look at that. So that's, that's a recent change that we've probably, in the past couple of years, we added that.
Okay.
So, and as well as the outage app online.
Yeah, like, I know, I downloaded the app, but I didn't necessarily report it. I just saw it was out around me, and then I was like, "Okay, they know it's out," you know, and moved on, so.
But that's the main thing, is now you can text us. And like I said, we do text you, and you can, you can do multiple accounts, so if you have apartment buildings or your business that you want to know when that power is out, you can do as many, you can add as many accounts as you want to that notification process.
Excellent. So when you are, become aware of an outage, is it initially from someone calling or texting? Is that how you find out?
Yes. Yep.
Okay, so one person in the neighborhood texts or calls and identifies you. At that point, is the, does the discovery phase happen? Like, you, you go to the site and you're expecting a small issue?
Yeah.
But you can identify a bigger, broader issue, if it's 100. Can you identify that right away?
Yes.
Or do you need 10 calls?
Yeah, if one person calls, and that's the only call we get, then we just send a truck to that house.
Okay.
Right.
But then, then we get, then that call comes in, then another call, then another call, and the system will analyze based on the, based on when they're calling in. We know, like I said, what feeder, what fuse, what transformer every customer's on. So based on, you know, going to your account and putting an outage in, the system will analyze it. And it may take 10 calls and say, "Okay, all these are associated with the same outage," and it creates an outage number.
Okay.
So you get 10 calls, but that's an outage number. And then across town on the other side, say something else happens, it'll analyze those and it'll create another outage number. Well, we have an outage on Elm Street, but we also have an outage on South Street. We know it's two different sides of town, so it's not the same device, so we have to send two trucks to each location.
Understood. And what I'm sort of questioning is if, if there's one person calls and a truck is sent out, and that truck arrives and they look around and there's no power anywhere, is there a need to have nine or 20 more calls? Or is it that, that representative says, "This is a broader issue, let me just investigate, do the discovery and..."
Most times, we do get, not just one customer calls. Most ti, although, you know, it happens in the big, the end of the big storms when people don't call and we don't know they're still out. And then we try to, that's why we try to reach out to people. If you're, you know, if you're still out of power, please call us and let us know. Because we may have cleared a big outage and a small section off of that outage may still be out that we didn't know there could have been a tree down beyond what we're looking at. And sometimes there's like three customers at the end of a circuit that are out and we don't know.
So there's no virtual way to know about outages, it's actual...
Not at this time.
Boots on the ground.
We don't have smart meters or any of that.
Okay.
I mean, there are some devices in town that the control center knows about, that they'd have to be one of the newer devices, and that's what I was going to get into, this pole top recloser. Right now, the ones that we have on that particular feeder, they don't communicate with the control center. But the newer ones, the replacement device that we ordered for that, we're going to replace that and put a new device in, that will communicate with our control center in North Borough. So when that operates, they'll know automatically and they'll just send a truck right there.
But for now, your best advice is, let's say, your, your neighbors on either side are out, they both call, you would recommend that you call as well? You don't, it's just...
The more people that call, it analyzes the system better. Because sometimes you may be, you know, because a lot of people say, "How come I don't have power, but the person across the street from me has power?" And they may be on a different transformer than, than you. Because we can only fit so many customers on a transformer, so it may look like you're all served on the same transformer, but you could be on, like, there could be a transformer on the other street that you all served on, and she may be served on a different one.
And I would guess text is better, that like, if you're calling and are we going to get a busy signal until someone picks up? So is text more effective and efficient for people, so they can just text it and it's done?
Or the app?
It doesn't, and it doesn't tie up the phone lines for like people calling the fire department and, and, you know, for, for big, you know, to report there's a tree down, like, because if you're just report, reporting an outage, you don't need to talk to anybody. It's just, "Okay, we're out."
Yeah.
But if you want to say, "Yeah, there's an outage, but there's also a tree down in front of my house and I can't get out,"
Yeah.
"Then we want that information." So that you have to talk to somebody about.
Right.
But a lot of times, they just call the fire department and they don't call us about those, so. And that's a, but then the, the fire department, we have a 911, they have a separate number that they call and it goes directly to our control group. So the, the fire department, when they call, they dispatch outage or motor vehicle accidents or that, it goes to a different number and it goes like to, ahead of the, ahead of the calls. Especially if there's a police and fire, if there's an apparatus standing by, that shows right up the top of the list. So we, we know which ones, what we have to address immediately to clear roads and things like that.
Thanks.
So that sort of segues into my question. I know personally, I wouldn't even know the number to call. I'd probably call the fire department. "Hey, my lights are out." You'd probably get a gazillion of those calls.
Yeah.
Now, would they be going to the call center, or would it be like non-emergency coming into you?
It's everything.
There is no...
And do you guys give the number to National Grid at that point?
Yeah, so we have, we have, there's three, three sets in the priority. So like a lifesaver, so if a live wire comes down across somebody's stairs and energizes their house, like that, that happens.
Yeah.
That's a real emergency. We have people in houses that we need to get out and things like that. Or it's a, it's a motor vehicle accident, we have live, you know, electrical wires or transformers that are, you know, a car where someone's injured. That, that happens occasionally, and we need like a response immediately. We would call a special number that would go right to the control center, we'd talk to somebody directly, and then they would dispatch people immediately. The other numbers that we have for the, like, priority twos and threes, it's a different process. I'm not sure I own there on what the process is, but, you know, there's different processes.
But again, if you have apparatus standing by, again, that goes right to the top of the outage list, so we see those as well. So the priority ones, that's like, you know, next truck, whatever, you know, drop what you're doing and get to that location.
Yeah. House fires or priority ones and keep that, so.
All right, so let's, it sounds like you had more to your presentation, and then I definitely have a couple more questions if you don't, if you don't hit those.
Okay, well, so, so I guess, based on the, the report that we got, that there was some concerned residents in that area of Main Street that consistently had outages, and I believe the last three outages, including Thanksgiving, all stemmed from this pole top recloser. And when we went out there, we couldn't find the cause. Now, depending, you know, now the cause, we patrol the whole feeder, depending on how, you know, if it's only 500 customers, it's not the whole feeder, it's only a portion of it. But the truck, before they can put them back into power, they have to patrol the whole feeder to see if there's something coming in contact with our lines. We don't want to put the power back in just for it to go right back out again. So they patrol the lines to see, is there a branch on the line? Is there a burning branch on the ground? Maybe it might have burned off the, the lines and it's now on the ground. Is there a dead animal there? We have a lot of squirrels that wreak havoc with our system. Is there a motor vehicle accident? Is there, you know, is there a piece of our equipment that they can see that might have failed? Now, the last, I think, three or four outages from that recloser, we didn't see any causes. So due to...
He did on Foxborough Discussion, the pole in front of Meadowview, where that neighborhood there was on, was on fire, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was two days ago?
Yeah, the one, that was just two days ago.
Was it yesterday?
Yeah, it was yesterday. Yeah, it was yesterday.
Okay, that's, I can, I can explain what that one was.
Okay.
But, but, but the recloser, like I said, we, we, it's an older model, like we said, due to the age, and it is rusted. When they did the patrols, they found that it's rusted. So we're, we're going to take down that piece of equipment, we're going to put a brand-new piece of equipment in. We ordered it, I think, this, the report that I got was around the 15th of November. So we just found out that that device is coming in, like, at the end of this week, we should have it. So when it comes in, we have to program it, because it's not just right off the shelf and you put it up. It has to be programmed, like, you know, how often do you want it to come on? How is it going to communicate with our control center? You know, what are the supply voltages? All that information has to be programmed. So once it's programmed, we'll take the old one down, we'll put the new one in, and hopefully that will stop some of these maybe false outages that it's reporting.
Okay. And will people lose power when that happens?
If it only, hopefully, if the new one goes in, hopefully it'll only go down if there actually is some, something came in contact with our system.
No, but when you're making the replacement.
No, no.
No one will lose power during that.
We don't need to, we can do that with, with the power line.
So, you know, the root of that sounds like it's aged stuff. And I know we did a lot 10 years ago, but, you know, the life on this stuff, it feels, it feels from where we are, like we have to kind of feel the pain before things are replaced, rather than there being maintenance and monitoring and proactive replacement of the equipment. You know, unfortunately, our residents have to, you know, have their oven go down in the middle of cooking a turkey on Thanksgiving morning, or, you know, be blow drying their hair, heading off to work as a teacher on another morning, in order for us to kind of get to the point that, that equipment's replaced.
I mean, we do have programs, like we have our overloaded transformer program, so we keep track of, you know, transformers that may be coming to the, you know, because people just add load, but they don't call us. So five people on the street could all put central air conditioning in, and we don't know that. And then the summer comes and now the transformer blows because it's not big enough to support that. So there's a lot of things that, you know, it, they just sort of happen.
Well, swimming pools, like, that's something we can be proactive, though, like, we would know as a town, feel like the swimming pool's going in everywhere, so like, that's something that could have an impact.
But if they don't upgrade their service, we don't know that.
Right.
If they just use their existing service and put, they don't need to call us. The only time they would have to call is if they're going to upgrade their service. And at that time, we would assess, okay, what's the loading on that transformer? Do we need to bring in another one? So we do have, we do monitor that.
Okay.
We have an outside group that monitors, like, our poles, what shape the poles are in, you know, how old are they? Do they need to be replaced? So we do have a maintenance program for that. We watch, again, how many outages, how, you know, how often are the outages on the feeders? Do we need to address that feeder? So we have all these reports that we're constantly looking at to, to address these things.
And do any communities have like SLAs or KPIs or anything that you're working with? Maybe someone like Chief Kelleher to like, you know, gauge, how are things going? Are we having more? Are we having less? How do we compare to other communities? You know, you, I think a lot of us work in businesses with like service levels and stuff, and I would expect there to be service levels that even if there's no penalties to them, you guys monitor them.
We do with the DPU.
Okay.
We have, we have, you know, that's part of our rate case, is that if we don't perform, then we don't get...
And is that being communicated? How do we know if you're performing or not? Or how does Mike, Chief Kelleher, or Chris know if you're performing or not?
It's, this is with, directly just with the DPU.
Okay.
Because that's where we go for our rate cases and everything. So if we don't perform, if we don't, if we have like way too many outages or complaints or whatever, then we may not get the full rate increase that we, we may need or ask for.
Okay.
So, but we, that, because that's who, that's the entity that we report to, is Department of Public Utilities.
Okay.
How does that process work? So you have an outage and you're required to report that to DPU? Is there a certain...
Yes, oh yes. All outages, any outage more than a minute and more than one customer, we have to report everything.
And are, is Foxborough, for example, meeting the DPU's standards?
Well, it's not one of the poor performing feeders. We have a lot worse feeders that, and though, again, though, you know, the more customers that are out, depending on the length of time, how many customers are involved, that'll, you know, then that, that sort of brings that feeder up, "Okay, this is a poor performing feeder, we have to, you know, patrol it, what, what do we have to do to, you know, to fix it?" But none of the feeders in Foxborough are at that, at that point.
Is there a double penalty for Thanksgiving?
The lost pies?
So I have a couple of questions slash comments. So the outages, are we finding that that's more because of branches coming down or an animal, more than a transformer going?
It's, it's, you know, I, I have the list of all the outages, I think going back five years, and the bulk of my trees, that's, that's the...
Which we live in New England, so I think we, you know, we do have to maintain trees.
The bulk, the bulk of trees, and, and like I said, we had, you know, out of all those outages going back five years, nine were unknown. We don't know what caused it. We patrolled it, we couldn't find anything. And then the other is basic equipment failure, like a cable snapped, or, you know, an insulator failed, or, you know, it's just basic equipment failure. But we have so many pieces of these equipment that, you know, when it fails, then basically you fix it.
I feel like often, just people throw that, that phrase out, "Oh, a transformer must have blown." You know what I mean? Like, when we...
Well, one did blow by my house, and let me tell you, you hear it and you...
And that's a fuse. It's not the transformer that blew.
Whatever it was, like, you knew something happened down in that Taylor, South Street area, because it sounded like a train hit.
Yeah, that's, yeah, it's, it's the fuse that blows. It's not really a transformer, it's the fuse that blows. And basically, the fuse is just this tiny little piece of equipment, and you'll see there's a cutout underneath that transformer, it opens up, and it's sort of just hanging there. So when the crew drives by, they see, "Oh, it's a fuse." And all they do is take the old fuse out, put the new one in, slap it in, and it goes back.
So just, just asking around some people, some, some friends who have a little bit of knowledge of how it works. I was getting a little bit of a lesson this past week about how the main power's in the top line and...
Primary, the primary cable.
Then it drops down to go into the house, you know, something about 500 something up the top, 100 going in. And so, you know, I asked him, like, "Well, is it the transformers?" And he was kind of like, "Not as often as you think." Because people just, I just, people say, "Oh, a transformer went in town." Not that they don't, but I thought that might have been, and in full disclosure, the development where I live, our last stuff to the homes, everything's underground. So we don't lose power very often. Of course, our Main Street coming in, we have, you know, we have poles and, and occasionally,[1494.33] Um, of course, our Main Street coming in, we have, you know, we have poles and, and occasionally, but not, you know, when I see so many people have lost power, um, a lot of times, ours might've flickered once and, and that's it. So I, I was asking around, cause, uh, this last couple of outages, um, you know, I have some friends that, uh, family that lives in Mansfield, some friends that, uh, live, that work, work friends that live in North Attleboro, and they both have their own utility, their own electric companies in their own town. And that they didn't, you know, they didn't, weren't losing power where we were. One of the things that a friend brought up is, um, the term ground to sky, where, where if you drive through, and I can't wait to really drive through one of those towns where I can really pay attention, that they do not have any trees near their poles. And, um, and that it was brought up one time here in town, one time, and the town does not want to do that. They don't want to see the poles. They, you know, I mean, when the trees have leaves, some of the, you know, it's more, um, you know, what it looks like. So I'm just wondering, what is more important? If you can see the poles and maybe it's not as pleasant to look at? Or if we were to, rather than just trimming, cause obviously, um, you know, the, you know, you could trim every year and keep trimming and keep trimming.
Have a five-year cycle, five-year cycle.
So, um, I, I just didn't know, i- i- are we at that point that we might want to look into? You know, losing some of the trees? Or if there are certain areas in town that are losing? I mean, I'm just throwing that out because this is what I was told, that, that North Attleboro and Mansfield do not have trees near their poles.
Actually, while we're talking about that too, can we just squash this rumor that we can just, like, people like, let's start our own power company?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. And that's not why.
Educate people like, that's not gonna happen. I'm not being a pessimist.
Exactly.
I don't think it's even legally allowed to happen. And I can't even imagine the capital it would ever take.
The work and effort that it takes to happen.
Well, isn't there like, someone said, so like state legislature doesn't even allow it anymore? So.
Yeah. Well, and that's not why I'm bringing these towns up for the, for the fact that they do.
I mean, people will say that, like, let's get our own, like, like, cause if we're going up to like.
This is one of the challenges you have is that we order two communities that have their own electric light department. It's a different, it's a different service.
And they don't fall under the DPU. We, we fall under the Department of Public Utilities. They do not fall under. They have their own rules and regulations that we have to abide by our rules and regulations.
Well, and the only reason why I do bring them up is just, you know, I don't even know if Chris might know. You know, people tell you things and whatever. I was like, and I was like, oh, I can't wait till I'm driving through Mansfield, maybe pay a little more attention, you know, is that some of the reason? Like, what, why aren't they losing power and we are? I mean, National Grid, you're a big company, you're doing your best to, to have everything run well for us. So I'm wondering, is that one of the things? Like, i- is that what the power goes out? I mean, there is faulty equipment from here and there, like I said, a cable snaps or something like that. But it's a lot of the outages really from storms where, where limbs are hitting. And I'm, now I'm guessing, when you're explaining how that third time it goes out, so I'm guessing if it's hitting that top wire and a branch hits it once, twice, three times, now the power's gonna go out probably because you don't want it to hit another time.
I think she's saying that those last ones weren't branches. There was a faulty, an old device.
No, but I'm just talking in general. This has gone on for years.
And I think everyone understands when there's a storm, like the October 27th, 28th outage. We live in New England. Response times are what they are. I think it's, in my mind, which we do have to clear, you know, branches and everything. And I'm curious if we are in the three years, the five-year cycle. But these other mysterious ones to me that were more like the head scratchers, like, why, you know, why do we have six in the last, in the last month when there is no, when there's only two storms?
Yeah. And that is, was because of this faulty, what we think is this faulty recloser. That we're, we're in the process of replacing. And, cause that was, I think, the last four or five, especially where there was no cause found.
Yep.
Okay, that's, we gotta replace that, you know, let's put a new one in so it can communicate with the, with our control center. It's not one of the older ones. It's gonna be a, a newer model.
And it sounds like that's gonna be, you said, the end of next week it's in or when?
It's, it's gonna come in, but then we gotta program it. So it's, it's probably gonna take a couple of weeks to program it and then we'll get it up. In the interim, we move some of the load off of that feeder.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, cause we can basically move customers from one feeder to another. And they don't even know it because we have open ties without this, throughout the system. Now, yesterday, we were in the process of moving, we were working at the Foxborough One substation on a circuit breaker. So we can't work on it live. So we moved the load around to other feeders. We're in the process of putting everybody back. And that's when the load break switch failed and it was on fire. And I think I saw it on your Facebook page, somebody, I don't know how somebody happened to be there right at that second when that.
She lives right there. I know who posted it. She literally lives right, right there.
But that was the load break switch and it failed.
And if you guys proactive in letting him know, hey, we're doing this and this, and this is, might catch on fire, so heads up.
Well, our guys were there, we didn't know it was gonna go on fire.
Right, but I mean, it's a risk, you know?
Yeah, but our guys were, we were working in the area, um, but, um, the thing, you know, the thing is the switch, we, we used that switch to swap everybody around and it worked fine. But then, you know, two weeks later, when we go to operate that switch to bring everybody back, it failed. So you don't know, you know, it's a piece of electrical equipment. You just don't know when it's going to fail or how it's going to fail. Um, but that, that's what that was. It was a load break that, um, and now we're in the process of replacing that. And then we'll put everybody back. So, so we took a chunk of customers that were on that pole top recloser. We moved them on another feeder and it's a feeder, it's the backup feed to Gillette Stadium. So it's a pretty reliable feeder.
Okay.
So hopefully that'll, you know, alleviate that many customers while, until we get this new pole top recloser up on there. So we took a bunch of customers off that feeder.
Okay. I think Bill had something and then I just want to go to Chris and Mike and ask you guys, what can Ann do to make or help your lives easier after Bill has his point?
So just a couple of points, Ann. I know you're, you're the rep, so I'm not gonna, I'm, I'm not blaming you, but I, but you, but I, but it's, it's more or less a common and observation about what you described tonight. So it strikes me as in this day and age, that we have a system that doesn't have sensors and it built into when the power goes out, that, that should, that should be signaled back to the main station and say, look, we got power on this section of our, of our system.
Like my Alexa can do it, you know?
Yeah, that, that, that's something that should be looked at immediately as something why we should be doing.
And that's something I was gonna, I was gonna get to that.
Okay, good. Okay, glad, glad you are. Glad you'll do that. The second thing is that, um, I, I don't know how robust the, the repair replacement program is as compared to say a North Attleboro or a Mansfield system. Because obviously they have the built-in capabilities to do that, a little bit more on a regular basis than, than you would because you're a bigger company. Um, but having said that, it's still something that should be a consideration. The last point is the, is the issue concerning the, the tree, the tree trimming program. I think that given that the nature of the storms we've been having as of late, that five-year program should be immediately changed to three years. Because I just think that we're at a point now where those situations are gonna continue to emerge as, as considerations. And you, you, you stated from the beginning that the majority of, 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 of our powerages are related to trees and tree impacts.
And are we at three years about right now, I feel like?
We're.
We're just about, we're, we're done, cause all that work we did with those other, um, feeders, we did all the trimming. So I think next year, I don't think they, they have any planned trimming for next year. Cause we did it like three years ago. We did all the, we did all the feeds. Cause it's, it goes by feeder. It doesn't go by town. It goes by the different feed. So when the feeder is done, it's five years. But if Chris or, you know, if the town says, hey, there's over on Main Street, there's a bunch of, you know, limbs on the wires, we'll go out there. It's not like we'll wait, we don't have to wait for five years. We get calls all the time that, you know, hey, that around here, there's trees hanging over. And we send our arborist out and talk to the town arborist. Cause it has to, you know, is it a, is it in the public way? Is it a private tree? Because we can't trim private trees. We have to talk to the, to the resident. And a lot of these big storms, it's not a lot of trees that are in the public way. It could be private trees, especially some of these bigger trees that came down in that, those, those last few storms.
So those are the three points I wanted to make. And I just, I will tell you that, um, proactively, I saw even in my, my own community where I live, uh, in Seekonk, they actually notified me recently, National Grid, that, that, that they needed to remove a tree from my front yard. I signed off it, gave it back to them and they, and they marked it, but I haven't seen them go out there and do the work yet. But, um, so they are proactively doing that, which is good to see that. But I think the three points that I wanted to make are points that I would hope that you could bring back to the leadership of the company and say, look, you know, these are things that we should be looking at now. These are things that I think the residents of this community want to see happen. And I, and obviously the board wants to see it happen because we're the ones that get the calls.
Yeah, and I think we've come a long way since like 2012 and now it's 10 years later. And I feel like we're going, I don't want to lose that, you know, momentum.
Momentum.
You know, the tree trimming, um, proactive and, and all that.
Yeah, we did have, um, it's called the grid monetization plan. And every uti, every public utility in the state of Massachusetts had a file, um, what their plan would be. And it's like, okay, they need to have a, it can't just be one plan. It's like, okay, if you want everything, what would it be? Okay, well, how much is that gonna cost? And how much is that gonna cost? Okay, so we're not gonna be able to do all that. What's, what's the, what would you want for everything? What's middle of the road and what's the least you could, so we had to file a plan on all these things. Um, and one of the things we're looking at, I remember I talked about that recloser. And the recloser right now that we're putting in, it just doesn't, it just, you know, it communicates to our control center, but they have this other, um, they call them, um, I have to look at this, Fault Location Isolation System Restoration Scheme. And that would be a group.
One day you could remember it.
You wanted it, you wanted it, okay? Flizzer, flizzer is what they call them.
Oh, I like the acronym.
What that is, it's a group of reclosers and they all talk to each other. So.
But do they talk to you?
They, they, they will. So on a feeder, and in this particular feeder, because of the size, the length of it, the amount of events that you've had, the proximity to multiple substations, we're gonna, we're looking to hopefully put this scheme on that feeder. And what the, um, what those devices do, they all talk to each other. And so depending on where the tree comes down or the car hits or the squirrel hits, they all talk to each other and they can, they isolate wherever the, um, the, um, fault is. And only those customers are affected. Everybody else stays on. So there are gonna be some customers that are still, so wherever the tree came down or the motor vehicle accident.
Minimizing the impact, yeah.
They may be out, but everybody else stays on. And we don't even send a truck out. It's just automatic, well, we do to, to fix that, the fault. But rather than the whole section going out, these devices talk to each other and it just isolates it. And we had a pilot in, um, Worcester, probably, I don't know how many, five years ago. And we had these in there and it did, and they worked. Now, these things cost a lot of money, so, um, we can't be putting them in everywhere, but we're gonna start slowly bringing those in. And this is one of the feeders we're looking to put one of these schemes in. But again, it's a fight, we have to file with the DPU, let them know what we're doing, how much money we're spending. It has to be approved and all of that. But we're recommending that this area that we, we try to put some of these in. So this is, this is the beginning of this whole grid monetization plan.
So Chris and Mike, is there anything that Ann or National Grid can do or improve on? In your personal observation, especially recently as far as, you know, whatever it is, proactive communication, you know, maintenance, anything?
Um, yeah, I mean, from, from the DPW side, I mean, we've communicated with Ann quite a bit, um, throughout the year. Um, our Tree Park Supervisor, um, who is retiring shortly.
Yeah, that, that, I'm worried, how does that impact things?
I've, I've stolen his contacts from his phone, so I have those. Um, but, you know, that communication, we, the DPW takes down anywhere from 50 to 100 trees every winter. Um, and these are trees that are within the public right of way that the town owns. If there are things that he notices or I notice as we're driving around town, um, we get in touch with, you know, usually directly with the National Grid arborist. Um, they have a couple of different programs where, you know, they can get it on the tree trimming program. If it's a hazard tree, there's a, you know, another contact for their hazard tree crew. And they'll come in, you know, same day, next day, you know, take a tree down. Typically, if it's, if it's in the wires, we can't touch it.
So is the best course of action for a resident to call you guys and then you'll escalate if need be to them?
That's typically how it works. Yeah, typically somebody has a tree in their front yard. They don't know if it's theirs. They don't know if it's the town's. They will call us and say, hey, this tree looks like it's dead. Whether it's gonna hit the wires or not, they'll call us first. We'll figure out, do we need to involve National Grid? Um, we are not in the business of taking down healthy trees, just for the sake of taking down healthy trees. But we do work pretty closely with National Grid as far as what trees need to come down. Um, Steph, to your point about, you know, ground to sky, the trees that are coming down are not, you know, 10 feet, you know, to the power lines. You would have to go 50, 60, 80 feet out to take some of these hundred-foot pine down that come down Mill Street, Prospect Street.
Especially like my end of town, like I feel, yeah, like that end of town, I can't even imagine how you would.
Yeah.
Um, and I, yeah, people don't want that. They don't want to see that. And to be honest, most of that stuff isn't within the town right of way. So it's not even something that we can legally go onto private property to do.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and National Grid's kind of in the same spot where they have the right of way. That's, that's their limits of work now.
Yeah.
Yep, they can talk to a homeowner. There's, you know, some give and take. If the homeowner's willing to let them go on, on private property and take it down, you know, they will work with property owners that way. But for the most part, that's something property owners can do too. You know, the power lines run down the edge of the road or the back of the sidewalk. And that's usually where the property line ends. So most of those trees are coming down from private properties. And that's something that private properties can take, owners can take responsibility for. And be proactive if they are concerned and, and help the system out that way.
Oh, yeah. I didn't even know if that was, you know, the problem. I'm just, like I said, from, from somebody who loses her power very little, you know, uh, but.
We've talked about it in the last three years since I've been on the board. We talked more, Ann was here. And we did talk about that. And, you know, I remember Prospect Street coming up at like, it's easy to do maybe Main Street, you know, where Doc is, but it's, it gets more difficult in those hundred-foot pine.
Well, and you have, you have scenic roads in Foxborough as well.
Yeah, right.
We're limited as to what we can take down for trees. They have to go through a, a public hearing process through the planning board on these scenic roads to take down trees within the public right of way.
And Foxborough isn't the worst place. I mean, I, and I think Ann probably knows this better than I do. You know, a place like Dover, you know, and, and this, those, those streets are all thickly lined with trees. And usually when they have a bad storm, it's like the number one place that goes out. Uh, because they, it's all tree lined. It has to be, runs out of that problem. So we're, we're far better off in that respect, far better off.
You know, I think in, in regards to storm response, you know, the, the most recent storm, um, you know, where I think 36 hours, we were back up and running with, you know, maybe with the exception of one or two houses. Um, with the amount of damage that was out there, I mean, that was, in my opinion, impressive. Um, you know, we, they had to bring a crane in for one of the trees.
Yeah, the one by the urn?
Yeah.
Two, right? The one on Ridge and the one on. The one on Ridge Road or Chestnut.
Okay, I was thinking the one by Jenna.
That was really bad.
Yeah, Chestnut.
Those are two really, I mean.
Those are big trees.
Yeah, that was a lot of damage to the infrastructure too. And I, I think, you know, in, in kind of support of, of Ann and what National Grid has done, I look at it and kind of compare it to the water system in town. You know, you have these series of pipes in town. You have a series of poles and wires. But the larger components, similar to what the water department has done, there's, they've been taking care of those things. You know, that Union Loop project was a massive undertaking. Um, that was, that was all of one construction season and then into the next one. Um, and that was, you know, I, not knowing numbers, but I would assume that was a, a pretty substantial, um, project for National Grid to do. You know, you have to deal with the larger items first. And then you start to kind of hone in on, on the smaller items, the substations, you know, the, and the substation, we've already talked about. Um, you know, Ann and I have met on, on that site. You know, they're gonna be out, you know, planning spring, next construction season, most likely to come in and start doing that work. And then you, you start big and you start getting smaller and smaller. And, you know, hopefully you catch more of these, these outages as we go forward.
Mike, from your perspective?
And I think, um, emergency wise, things have gotten a lot better. Um, our community liaison actually lives here in town, so that's kind of a nice personal touch. The last storm, I actually met her at, uh, Semrec and put her right in the middle of the room. So, um, that was kind of, you know, so it was something we did for the first time. And during those storms, Chris and I talk every hour. So we prioritize and, and try to get our arms around what's going on and then bring certain parts of town up. Um, but as far as, the day Ann and I spoke last night for a little while. And, um, I think one thing going forward that I'll try to do is make a more concerted effort to talk to Ann on a more regular basis. To get a, like an understanding of some of the, the smaller scale things like this, recloser and the issues. I, I always get the calls too about some of the, um, power outages. And I don't always understand the minutia of what's going on in our system. So I think that's one of the things we need to.
One last point, and, and, um, and thanks, Chief, for doing that. And Chris, you know, cause I, I know you guys spend a lot of time working with National Grid. And I've worked with Ann for a number of years now. So, um, the one thing that, the long-term strategic thing that I, that I worry about is that, um, for towns and across the country actually, is the, the capacity of the grid system itself. Because there's such an emphasis now on electric vehicles that the load and, uh, for the system itself doesn't seem to be capable of handling all that load. So I'm, I'm wondering, you know, there, there was sort of federal funds talked about during the infrastructure bill that was talked about. So I'm wondering if any of that money's gonna be funneled towards, towards National Grid or the system itself, so we can see some of those improvements done as well. Is, is there any talk about that at your level?
Um, I have, we haven't seen that yet, so we don't know what, what's coming towards us. But one of the, um, when we bought that land up on, um, across from Gillette there, the North Foxborough Sub, that's just a, a modular. Um, so it's like, it, basically we just drive in the transformers. They, we can move them anywhere we want. So it's a very small substation. But with the low growth in Foxborough, it's growing so quickly, that can easily, we can easily change that into a, a much larger substation. So, and we're looking at that because the low growth in this area seems to be going quite fast. So, um, that's one of the, the next areas we'll look into and increase that. So we, we're constantly looking at the capacity, um, you know, constantly, you know. And, and then the other thing we have to battle with is, um, we got a lot of distributive generation coming online. We got the solar farms. How does that interact with our system? Um, you know, we got to be careful how much, how much solar we have, you know, with the power coming and going. We, how does that affect our system? So, you know, the engineers are constantly looking at that and trying to look ahead, how, you know, this is what it is now. But what's it gonna look like five, 10 years down the road? But those, those are some of the issues that we have to, we have to deal with. But like I said, the grid monetization is one of those things that is on our radar. Um, and, um, and hopefully we get some of these newer devices up there. Um, and, you know, once we start, you know, there'll be more and more coming in. But again, the fire line, we have to start small and then grow from that to see how it works. And if it works, you know, keep, keep going.
You said there's one loop. There is two reclosers, correct?
That's what we have now.
Are they the same vintage?
Yes.
Is it safe to say that they could fail at the same time?
They could, although, you know, this other one, we didn't know it failed until the last, like, cause it was working prior to that. I mean, it was, it was just the last three or four. And we don't know if it is because of the, the rust in the, the control box or, or, or whatever. But I said, we are putting a brand new one in. Um, and then eventually, hopefully, once we get the okay, we'll be putting these newer, modern ones in that'll talk to each other and make it even easier. So even less customers are affected.
Seth has one final comment.
So, thank you, Leah. So I, I feel compelled to mention that I've heard from some concerned citizens recently, today. Um, and I know they're watching now. Um, and so they're concerned, uh, as a result of the volume of outages that we've had. And we've talked about that and hopefully some of the, this conversation has helped to, um, what's the word? Assuage? Swage? Assuage, um, their concerns? Um, but I know that the content of some of that discussion, um, with the, with the concerned citizens was around, um, revisiting history frankly. And, and so there was discussions back in 2012. We talked about 2012 when we had a lot of issues. Um, and there was prior administration had discussions with, with National Grid. And there was, um, things communicated that were intended to help people, um, have, whether it's recourse or not financially, but just getting power and maintaining it. Um, so the crux of it was that they, they're interested in continuing this conversation. And if that means that they're gonna come into, to the next meeting that we have and continue to address it, um, that may be it. I don't know, um, how much, um, value or what we'll discuss. But there's, there's citizen concern. Um, I expect that they'll want to continue this conversation. So I just wanted to put that out there and put it on the, on the record.
Yeah, I definitely, I, I have to say, I expected at least a couple of people here tonight. I'm, I'm kind of surprised there's, there's no one. Um, based on the pitchforks on, you know, Foxborough discussion and everywhere else. And then, you know, maybe we heard from the same citizen. Um, you know, so maybe if we want to start by bringing something in, I don't know that we need to bring Ann back, like, next meeting. I think that, you know, you've, you've taken the time and you've come here tonight to our publicly posted meeting. And, and stay in communication with us, like, like what you're telling us happened. We're all sitting here wondering and the citizens are wondering, you know, why has the power gone out three times on Van Doren? You know, in the last, or four times in the last month, you know? So keep that communication loop going with us so that we know and, and we understand that you guys found the problem and are, and are gonna fix it, so.
And if, you know, and if other customers do, you know, if there's other areas, pockets that there's problems, if, if it goes to Bill, and Bill can call me. But definitely those, that, those customers calling, that did get us going. That's what provoked these, um, patrols. And we did the infrared testing. And we're actually, I didn't, I don't know if I mentioned, we're doing some drone testing. We're having some drones come in. We don't have them here. They're coming in from New York. So they're actually gonna be taking, um, pictures. Cause that's the one thing, you can drive by, but if you're not right there.
that's the one thing, you can drive by, but if you're not right there, so these drones are actually going to take pictures of some of these equipment that's up on the poles.
I think any progress along those lines into Bill's point is really important.
Know, you know, especially when this recloser gets installed. Um, you know, what the results of some of these other, um, surveys that we're doing. Definitely let, let Bill know so he can, uh, pass it along.
If anyone's watching at home and has a follow-up, um, do we facilitate that through, who's the best person to get Bill, so, you know, facilitate those through Bill?
Yeah, I, I, usually it's, it's Mike or I or Chris, either one of us.
And then I think we can gauge, you know, is it, is it one people or fifteen people, and, you know, then we can figure out if we need to have a follow-up discussion or if we're on the, on the right track.
But I think people should really, you know, sign up for that, get in the texts. Because that's, especially when, you know, for some of these bigger storms and you're out for three days, people are going to someone else's house, they want to know when their power's back, we'll let them know. So, but it's better to do it before the storm hits to get signed up.
And I downloaded the app, actually, during that last one, but I, I have to say I missed the text thing, so it's good to keep talking about it.
Well, sometimes I, I, people feel like, oh, I'm sure somebody's called.
Right. I think that's all you can go to Facebook. Oh, someone called, yeah.
And, you know, I just want to say to, not, not to take anyone in, in town who's, um, has lost po- power, because I know how frustrating that can be. But with that being said, you know, sometimes, you know, you go on Foxborough Discussion, you know, we hear it all the time, someone says, oh, I have to be at work at six o'clock, but the plow doesn't come by my house till seven. Well, the plow has to start somewhere, you know, and, and so for me, the takeaway, I'm going to take away tonight, it, it, I was pleasantly surprised to hear Chris say that he was impressed on how the last couple of times were handled. So for me, if our DPW director, I just feel like we're heading in the right direction. It may not be perfect. So anyone listening at home, of course, any of your concerns, get them in here, but, you know, Chris is our DPW director. I know, um, Mike has a whole different thing with, you know, it changes for you when it's an emergency and, and, you know, maybe a wire's on someone's house or near their house or whatever. You know, but I was pleasantly surprised to hear that Chris was happy, at least how these incidents were handled.
And, and we have Ann in once a year. I'd say it's been November, December for the last four years I've been here. But if we need to have you in, hopefully not, we'll knock on wood. You know, but if, if there's more branch concerns like, like you brought up or other things, you know, I, I don't think that there's any rule of thumb that we, you know, can only reserve this conversation once a year, so.
And just, just a word to, uh, to, to the company is that the extent you can get that, that piece of equipment before Christmas is probably better. So we, so we doesn't have their, their, their Christmas interrupted or their Christmas meal interrupted. That would be helpful.
Especially because it's the same people, kind of with that particular problem over and over, so. All right, well, thank you very much, and thank you, Mike and Chris, for coming out.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks, Ann.
Thank you.
Not an easy job. I commend you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ann.
Thanks.
All right, so next we're going to Bill's. So every month we do a department update, um, and next is the Town Manager's Office. I did, what is in Board Docs is a little bit longer than what we're going to present tonight. I asked Bill to actually reserve his goals for next meeting. So I think that the department update should be different, should be a different discussion than, than Bill's goals. So we'll, we'll keep this to Town Manager's Office, Department Licensing on Human Resources, Licensing and Communication.
When is this added to Board Docs, this presentation?
I'm sorry, today.
What's today? It was on today, yeah, it was on today, this morning.
It was added today?
Yes.
I guess just we check on Fridays when the agenda comes out, and we have, again, we have no idea. If you check on Friday and you think you're all set for the meeting, we have no way of knowing that anything's posted out there. So it sounds like Seth, you might, you might not have seen it if you checked Friday or the weekend.
Yeah, I like to, I like to review postings, um, ahead of time.
Yeah, so if anything's added after Friday, rule of thumb, just always let us know. Just click email.
Fair enough. So we, we, um, so Christina, you're going to post this on there so I can go through it. Okay, great.
And we'll try to keep this to like fifteen, twenty minutes.
Yeah, that's right, that's, that's the whole goal.
Yeah, we're already pretty behind.
So just, uh, just by way of, of update, or just by way of introduction, I just wanted to introduce the, the five members of the staff that, that work in the, in the, in the Town Manager's Office and with the Board of Selectmen, and that, that is the, uh, myself, of course, as Town Manager, and, and I'm the Chief Operating Officer for the town. Mike Johns is the Assistant Town Manager, also the Human Resources Director, so and in event, and I'm not available, Mike can certainly, uh, run the town in my absence, but also has the responsibility of dealing with human resources on, on a regular basis as well. Now, in addition to, uh, Mike is Kate LeBeck, who is the Human Resource Specialist. Actually, one of the newest members of the staff, and Kate is here tonight. She's actually online somewhere. I think she'll be joining us shortly. And then Katie Lang, you've all met before, is the Executive Assistant to the Office and also the Liquor Licensing Coordinator. Uh, she's responsible for handling all the license. She's probably, she's really busy this time of year, doing all the renewals for everyone that, all the businesses in town. There's, there's some two hundred licenses that are issued each year, and so she handles that, uh, pretty efficiently, actually, and so does a great job with that. Christina, of course, is, is the Communications and Civic Engagement Specialist, and is, and you see her on a regular basis. So, uh, in addition to her responsibilities of working with the board, is handling all our communications, and we're going to be getting, talking about a communication strategy that we've been working on for a few years now, and, and are going to be laying and bringing that out to, for, into fruition, probably within the next thirty days or so, we will presenting it to the board to to get your blessings on that. So we had a dry run of going through some of those things today and pulled out a few things we want to continue to work on even more. All right, next slide, please. So the mission of our office is the, is to serve as the Chief Administrative Office for the town, along with some executive authority as described in the Town Managers Act, and provide a strategic direction, support and overall oversight of all town operating departments. The office provides direct support to the Board of Selectmen, to all the department heads, uh, to all the town operating departments to make sure that their, their operations continue to run on a smooth basis. We also, uh, the Board of Selectmen, we serve as direct support to the Board of Selectmen, who are the chief elected and, and also chief executives of the town, and provide, uh, support to you on a regular basis. We also serve as the key point of contact for residents, businesses, state and federal offices, and, and all our regional partners. So, uh, we have, uh, we serve sort of as the central executive authority for, as executive office effectively for the town and function on that basis. Next slide, please. So FY twenty-one accomplishments, I just want to go through them briefly, because, uh, and we'll talk about the goals, and I'll do just an overview of the goals for FY twenty-two, because I plan to talk about those at your next meeting. And we won't spend a whole lot of time on those, but the goals for, the accomplishments for, for FY twenty-one were, and these were talked about during, during the review process. Uh, restructuring of the Finance Department, you actually saw the result of that at the last meeting from the board. Uh, produced a second, a second sub-three percent budget goal, uh, and the goal is to achieve a third for two thousand twenty-three. FY twenty-three, which is what, what the process we're working on right now. We achieved a second, uh, confirmation of the town's AAA bond rating during the past year, during a COVID year, which is extraordinary in itself. Uh, and actually, um, may, were able to maintain a very low rate of borrowing for, uh, the major, uh, borrowing issues that we had this past year. We had the highest budget turnback in the town's history. That was due to the cooperation of all the departments and all the folks working together to try and achieve that. Obviously, you know, getting some, some, some healthy grants were, were also contributed to that as well. Next slide. The, uh, as far as the goal two was to protect and enhance communication and engagement. Uh, we provided Facebook Live updates during, during the pandemic, so the town was, was fully advised during the status of, of the crisis. Uh, we encouraged greater communication of all the partners to make sure that they were supporting each other during a very difficult time that we all experienced. We kept the town operations functioning at a very high level during the pandemic. In fact, Foxborough was probably, we, we were open nearly ninety-five percent of the whole time. Um, and even at the five percent that we weren't open to the public, we still operated, uh, fully during that period of time. Uh, even though we couldn't, uh, see face-to-face with folks, we were able to do things, uh, virtually in many cases. We're now in the process of developing the first strategic communications plan, uh, and we're very close to finishing that work now. Next slide. Uh, the, uh, goal three is to protect and enhance business and economic development. We actively remain engaged with, with, uh, with the business community during the pandemic. We enhanced relationships with Schneider Electric, resulting in a major grant that, uh, has, has just recently been completed, completed, by the way, in the terms of the new lighting on, on the common. It was a hundred fifty thousand dollar grant for the town. Uh, we worked with the, uh, FCB C on, uh, uh, FCB Con on a new branding project resulting in a new banners and, and way of finding, wayfinding for the Uptown area. Uh, we were able to get that brand, uh, branding in Upton and, and the new branding in place, and the new banners up in place. Uh, the develop, we developed the old, in the, working on the development of the old fire station, we're actually able to get that, make that transaction happen during the past year. And the new housing units on Wall Street will further enhance the Uptown area as well, and that's under construction as we speak. Continue to work with the, with the Craft Group in furthering the strategic development of their property with feature, with, with a feature in, in Business View Magazine during the past year that actually highlighted us on a national level. Um, and, and talked about the part, the partnerships that the town has with, with, uh, with the Craft Group and, and how we've helped to develop, uh, the business along Route One. Next slide. The next one was to protect and enhance town operations. And we're constantly looking at new ways to operate and restructure various town operations to further improve customer service. The official opening of the new Regional Nine-One-One Center was during, occurred during the past year, the new facility. Um, we're actually getting a visit by Lieutenant Governor this upcoming week, uh, to, to showcase that. It's still, it's, it just, I just found out last night that the design actually won a national award for, uh, for the design, for, for, uh, KBB, which is our, our designing, design company. And then also, uh, we agreements with, with Rentham, Norfolk, and Frankl to perform repairs of the fire trucks at the Foxborough Public Safety Facility, which was actually quite unique in many ways as well. So it's just a couple of the highlights of the things that we did, were a lot more things that occurred during the past year, but some of the, two of the, a few of the bigger highlighted ones that we, that we were able to get done. Next slide. Okay, there you go, okay. And then, um, so the goals for FY twenty-two, again, are to protect and enhance the financial health of the town. Uh, next slide, we'll, we'll get into those details in the next meeting. And again, those are, there's six, seven different categories, and this particular one goal, uh, next slide. Goal two will be to protect and enhance the communication through community engagement. Uh, continue to work through the, the actual, put the actual plan in place during the upcoming year, and make sure that we, we have everybody identified for who's going to do what and what their responsibilities will be as we engage in the process of communicating on a, on a higher level. I think what's, what we are, we, we, we talked about this just recently, that we live in a different world right now, where, uh, where communication, um, we are the communication source in many ways now, because we don't get the same level of coverage that we used to get um, in the community, uh, and, and let's face it, media sources are diminishing, they're not increasing. So it's becoming more of a personal media type of approach as opposed to a, a general media approach.
Bill, um, we, I know we're not going into details, but D, um, on the prior page.
Yep.
So the, I, this is something that I've been thinking about since I've been with, with this group. Assign staff or board liaisons to each of the town boards and committees. So they remain in the loop. Just, I'm trying to understand what, how that works.
So we, we'll talk about that at the, at the, on the, on the twenty-first.
Okay.
But I'm actually going to be unveiling some reorganization plans that will actually help with that.
Okay.
Uh, and I think, um, we'll, we'll be able to explain a little bit better at that time.
The intent of that, we bundled it with the appointments, so if you remember, like, I'm going to use the historical committee for the child sexual abuse. It was kind of like, where did they report into? Not for our board committee to be a liaison, but someone in the Town Manager's Office to provide them support?
I mean, and some, and we still have situations where, you know, there, there are, that we're trying to minimize them right now. There were, where there are individual, um, you know, citizen committees that have no real structure to report to and, and to do things, and if they need to pay a bill, how do they do it, that type of thing? So, so we want to try and get to the bottom of that, and we, we, we're, we're looking at through the restructuring plan that we should help.
All right, look forward to that. Thank you.
Yeah. Um, and then going back to, uh, the, uh, goal three is to protect and enhance the business and, uh, the business in smart economic development. Uh, continue to have and promote dialogue between town and its businesses on a regular basis. And we're going to continue to get into that detail, uh, next, next, uh, next meeting. But it's again, it's, this is the, this is started, this is sort of working on the same level of engagement that we want to help promote business throughout the community on, on a regular basis. And encourage new development that's consistent with our master plan. We don't want to just, you know, plop development where, where anybody thinks it's, it should, it goes. It should be following the plan, so that the quality of life in the committee is not in any way diminished. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, then finally, the, the, the goal four is to promote modern and professionalized town operations. Uh, we'll get into that again next, next meeting with, uh, with how we, how we plan to reorganize a little bit and to, and to consolidate operations, so we'll effectively have fewer departments and, and, and with a few, with a few divisions working underneath those departments. So we'll, we'll make the, uh, try to make the plan more efficient in that respect. So those are the four, the major goal areas that will be focused on, that we are focused on as we speak, and I'll talk about each of those in, in, in greater detail next, next, next meeting. Uh, but, uh, is, with the, with the backdrop of being that we're working on the budget right now, trying to get everything in line with the goal of, of what we talked about at the board level, um, uh, of trying to get to the two and a half percent level. Again, we're going to do the best we can to get there. We'll see if we can, if we can actually achieve it. And then looking beyond twenty twenty-two, I think this is something that I really wanted to, to spend a little bit of time with you all, because uh, as we all know, that, you know, in fiscal twenty-three, you'll be looking to, for a new town manager to, uh, to set some goals for summer twenty-three into some, into twenty-three. And these are some of the things that I thought would be, would be helpful for everybody to focus on. Uh, come up with an executive, executive plan to help utilize the federal opera funds. Those are, those, that has to be done by twenty twenty-four. And I think, you know, that once we have clear guidance from the federal government on, on Treasury, which we hope to see any time now, once we get that, we'll have a better understanding of how we can proceed. I think there are some people that are, and some communities that are moving forward with using that funds, those funds, I think they're doing so at their own risk. I don't, I wouldn't recommend that we do that, because I think we could, they could be in a position where we end up clawing that money back from us, and I don't think we ought to be in that position to do that. Uh, we should come up with a financing plan to address the key capital needs of the community, and we're going to have a conversation with the Capital Committee, uh, on the fourteenth, to have the, our first, uh, to go through as to how we should approach those things and and prioritize the items that are really important for the next phase of, of maintaining the community and keeping it up to speed. All while we have to maintain our, our AAA bond rating status, so I think we don't want to bite off more than we can chew, and we should come up with a strategy for each of the funding, uh, mechanisms for each of those projects. We want to continue to develop new methods and means for training and developing staff, and this is probably the most critical thing that any community should be, will be facing over the next several years. It's, it's, we've all learned it's become very difficult for us to hire, hire, uh, key staff members. There are a few, a few people that are, that are applying for these types of jobs. And, um, realizing that municipal work is not the easiest work in the world, but, but at the same time, it also can be very rewarding work. But the, it's just a very cha, it's a challenge not to get people interested in it. And so I think, um, what we're trying to do is then develop from internal, internally develop the people, hire them at a young age, bring them in at a young age, and develop them to the point where they can actually move through the grades in our own organization and help have that internal, um, understanding of, of how the organization works and actually turn out to be the next leaders of the organization. Next slide, please. Uh, we want to continue to maintain successful labor relations with all our town staff. We're in the negotiations right now with seven different labor unions. Uh, we should, uh, we've got, we've had, we've really minimized the number of conflict in our organization. We like to be known as an organization that's fair and reasonable and, and work things through the right processes and that we treat people with respect and, and treat them properly and as employees. We want to continue to maintain strong business relationships with the business community so that the economic climate of the community continues to thrive. We don't want to be positioned where we, we create processes that don't work towards the development of, of things that, that makes sense. As we don't want to make it difficult for people to not want to develop in Foxborough.
Like the zoning in, in the F-Cod is a good, good example of, you know, making it easier.
Um, we want to continue to be creative and strategic and find ways to do, uh, uh, do business more efficiently as a town. I mean, we can, we should always be looking at, it should be always in the forefront of how we operate and do business. Constantly reviewing our way that we do things. And we should continue to evaluate and promote the use of environmentally sensitive practices throughout the community and all, all aspects of what we do. That's becoming the, probably the number one issue, uh, in the world right now, is, is how we do things, uh, environmentally. And then continue to develop and promote the key communication tools that help us to engage the community and, and to make sure that, that people, uh, stay interested in what we do, take an interest in what we do, so we don't just, we're not just talking into the, into the, into the woods, so to speak, and that people are responding back to us and making sure that we do um, provide the ne, the kind of items that they want us to, want us to do for them. I think that's it, right, Christina? Or is there anything more after that? I think that's it, yeah. So that's it. I'm going to, I'm, I'll certainly defer it to Mike and to, uh, and Christina and, and Kate and, um, and, and there's actually two Kates now, it's Kate, Kate and Katie, so, not to be confused with each other, but, but I'll turn it to Mike at this point.
So I have five areas that I'd like to, uh, speak on that are important to our office in delivering services. And, um, and these are areas that, um, that I both lead and collaborate in. The five areas are operations, strategic planning, labor relations, as Bill mentioned, human resources, and risk management and insurance. So I'll just take about two minutes to, to talk about these, um, and then take any questions if you have them. So under operations, uh, workforce leadership, um, especially when it comes to hiring new, uh, department heads. Folks generally come up through, uh, uh, at a very technical level. And by the time they get to the department head or leadership level, they, they tend to need some, some management training and leadership guidance. Another area is focusing on operational effectiveness and efficiency. Another area is focusing on operational effectiveness and efficiency in all the services that we deliver and the kinds of services that we do deliver. And working as conveners in our office. We hear about a problem, let's convene the right people and let's talk about solutions towards that problem or those problems. Next, strategic planning. One of the things we talk about quite a bit is succession planning. And that's at the, at the department level, at the division level, as well as the, the town level. Work, workforce of the future is something that we focus on quite a bit. We know that the workforce demographics are changing. We know that the length of time people remain in a job change. And we're working to attract and develop the right kinds of people, but also make sure that we're adapting with changing times so that we remain competitive, but also continue to deliver the, the type of services that the community members expect. Along with that, we need to predict needs and, Bill and I talk about this all the time. Assess and address critical points of failure. And then Bill also mentioned sustainability. We didn't know what each other were going to be speaking on exactly, but establish sustainability on many levels. I was looking at it from, from more of a strategic and, and people perspective, but it does. It touches environmental, it touches, you know, training, it touches many, many different areas. Next area is labor relations. And this is one that takes constant communication and liaison from our office with individual employees as well as employee groups and, and our, and our labor, you know, unions. In, right now, we are in the process of negotiating with, with all unions. And, and the buildup to that throughout the summer and fall has been gathering comparable research and analysis of, of what's out there so that we can remain competitive, but not overpay. And then, you know, the next step, of course, is negotiating collective bargaining agreements. This, this room right here has been busy over the last several weeks and will remain so over the next four to five months in negotiating those, those, those collective bargaining agreements. And then dealing with conflict resolution, grievances, responding to grievances, adapting, adjusting as we need to. And then mediation, both on the level of bringing in mediators and us working as mediators ourselves. Next large group is human resources. In this, I work in policy development, recruitment, culture and strategy. So, you know, I've heard the expression, culture eats strategy for breakfast, so we spend a lot of time on strategy. But we also, we also have to remain focused on the culture of our workforce to be able to carry out the strategy that we set. And workforce retention. So we, we try to take on what I call the old Red Sox style, which is you, you bring them up from the minors and then, you know, develop them into, into multiple multi-utility players and then, you know, promote them when they're, if and when they're ready. Spend some time on investigation and action implementation from the results we find from those. Risk management and insurance, just a couple of areas. Legal and insurance claims, litigation, which I'm very happy to say we have no outstanding litigation going on. And this is an area that we get questioned on. You know, why do we need a, an HR director? Why do we need human resources? Even from the departments, why do we have to centralize human resources? Why can't we do it ourselves? And why do we need an assistant town manager? You know, I think the, the fact that we have no ongoing litigation, that we are managing our risk and that, and that we are identifying it and, and working towards it, I think is a, is a success. And we're not bleeding money towards, you know, towards court cases. Last couple of ones, you know, is dealing with and negotiating and, and paying for health, life, property, casualty, workers' compensation and injured on duty policies for our police and fire. And then the police, IOD, the injured on duty, that's just police and fire. The rest is for everyone else. And then paying invoices and reviewing all of those legal invoices and all of those insurance policies and invoices. So those are some of the things that we stay busy in.
And do we have a broker that does all that for us, like through MMA? So we're not going individually.